I call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the city of Rosemont for Tuesday, July 28, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
I don't believe so.
No additions.
Thank you. Is there any input from the audience on tonight's agenda for items that are not already on the agenda? And I don't see that we have any audience with us, so I will proceed forward. Oh, I did forget to read, just for those watching, I apologize. Let me step back. We are using Zoom tonight in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and in order to practice social distancing. So please keep an eye on the city website. Our meetings are, tonight is being held virtually, but the plan for the end of August is to be in council chambers. But watch the city's website for any updates on that meeting location. Citizens can watch and participate tonight in a variety of ways. You can view the city's website for more information on that as well. You will notice that during this virtual format, we do things a little bit differently. Commissioners will raise their hand physically or via the Zoom app to speak. All votes will be done via roll call led by Stacy. During the audience input, we just had, and public hearing portion of the meeting, the public will be able to speak using the microphone on their device, if using the Zoom app or on their phone. Staff will respond to public questions during the public hearing. This is normally not done until the end of the public hearing, but given the different format, we are going to answer them as we go. And then any letters or emails that were received tonight as part of public comment will be reviewed at the beginning of each public hearing item. And with that, we will continue. I apologize for forgetting to mention that at the beginning. The next item on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda contains three items: approval of the June 23, 2020, regular meeting minutes, a continuance of the request by KJ WAC Incorporated for a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, plan unit development, and final site and building plan, and preliminary and final plat approval associated with Rosewood Commons Hotel and Senior Living Mixed Use, and a request by Lennar Inc. for final plat approval of Bella Vista Seventh Edition. Real quick before I ask commissioners if they have any comments or items they want to pull out of the consent agenda, I just want to ask for clarification, Kyle, on item B of the consent agenda, the continuance for KJ WAC. That the, any letters or emails that were received prior to tonight for this item will be included in the packet for the next, next month. Is that correct?
That is correct. And as you'll note from the staff report, the recommendation is to continue to the second meeting in August, which I believe is August 25.
Yes. Yes, that is correct. So August 25 is where this item would be continued to, and it would be on the August 25 Planning Commission meeting with a tentative city council date of September 15. So with that, are there any other comments from the commissioners on the consent agenda? Any items they wish to have pulled from the consent agenda?
I've got just one question if I could.
Yes.
And the item C of the consent agenda, Bella Vista Seventh Edition, I think the last addition when that came forward, it could have even been this one, I'm not sure, but we had some residents come forward who lived to the north of the Bella Vista developments. And there were some concerns about some drainage in their, in their yard, increased drainage because of some of these developments. And I'm just curious if there was any follow-up on that. And I wouldn't want to hold this up for that, but just curious if, if anything became in that discussion since we're talking about a development that's also adjacent to these properties.
Sure. So as I recall, when, when this, this application actually came in a while ago and was held off because the city was still working on, or working towards a, getting easements and moving forward with the project to build on a path. This can't go forward without that. At that time, I believe we shared information with some of the residents that had asked questions. And essentially, you know, what we got at the time was an updated preliminary plat drawing for the grading in the whole area, which fairly closely followed the preliminary plat. So that was shared at that time. That really hasn't changed, you know, in the intervening time since that application first came in. So what you have in your packet is, is the information that would have been shared with the residents at that time. And I do want to point out, because you brought it up, there, there is no, the, the stormwater net patterns in that area aren't being disturbed by the development. What is currently flowing into that northern parcel is going to be flowing into that parcel now after this development at the same rate, same, same timeframe and everything. So what that property should be experiencing is essentially the same conditions that, that exist right now. So that's been explained, and I, I think we know, will certainly continue to share that information as the project moves forward. But I think, you know, to answer your question, the updated plans and information that you have was shared at that time, going back several months ago now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmuzek. Stacy, would you take role?
Henninger.
I.
Vanderwill.
Pam, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I.
Freeman.
I.
Marlo.
Hi.
Rivera.
Hi.
Schmuzek.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Motion passes. That concludes the consent agenda item this evening. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. We have one item on the public hearing section this evening. There's a zoning ordinance text amendment to Section 11-2-15, essential service facilities and 11-1-4 definitions. And I will turn this over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm just going to provide a brief review of the discussion that took place at the last meeting where staff had asked for feedback from the commission with regards to the two sections of the zoning ordinance that Madam Chair just listed. The, the essential services and transmission facilities ordinance is, it allows the city to regulate pipelines and overhead electrical wires and other facilities that are essential to basically the running of, of the city. Within the essential services section, there is a call out for transmission facilities. Currently, the definition of a transmission facility is electrical wires over a certain amount of kilowatts, as well as pipelines that carry, specifically carry natural gas at a PSI or pounds per square inch pressure over 200. Staff has been hearing from some operators of facilities, namely Flint Hills Resources, about how their pipelines wouldn't necessarily fall under the transmission facility definition due to the fact that they don't carry natural gas, even though a pipeline itself would ultimately have the same land use implications regardless of what was being carried within it. So staff is recommending a update to the definition that would eliminate that specification for that a pipeline must carry natural gas for it to be considered a transmission facility. And then additionally, there was another question about the threshold at which a transmission facility permit would be required, which is essentially a conditional use permit. Currently, the zoning ordinance requires a transmission facilities permit for any, any project that is greater than one-fourth of a mile in length. Because of specifically Flint Hills Resources, their, their facility is so large that they could have a project basically within their tank farm connecting two, two tanks. And just the way that the pipes are routed, it would, it would be higher than that quarter-mile threshold and trigger a public hearing process just for some regular, what they would consider day-to-day installation of, of pipelines within their facility. So staff had asked the commission for some thoughts or feedback or ideas on what maybe would be a more realistic threshold that would still allow the city to regulate pipelines specifically, or especially those that have impact on the, the greater city, but also allow for fewer of their, the regular installations that take place within Flint Hills Resources refinery over at Pine Ben, from them having to go through, you know, what could be 30 public hearings within a year for, for what is essentially their day-to-day process. So the commission had expressed some desire to maintain a level of regulation that would allow any pipelines that might go through properties or extend beyond a certain area, still receiving or receiving the, the review for a facility or for a transmission facility. And since the, that meeting, staff did speak with representatives for the refinery, asking them what their thoughts were. And their biggest concern, at least from the conversation that I had, was that the, the projects specifically within the tank farm, but also connecting components of the refinery, not necessarily all falling under that transmission facilities permit requirement. So I'm just going to show a couple of examples of what staff is recommending, which would be to add the verbiage that, that would say for those projects that are entirely within a, a single facility, that they, that the threshold would be any pipeline within or, or going outside a half-mile area, measured equally on all sides. And if it was a circle, it would be the specific radius or diameter, which was one-eighth of a mile diameter of that circle. So I'll show you a couple of images of what, what that would, what that would really look like if it, if it was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. So here would be a circle with a roughly one-half mile, square mile.
Anthony.
Yeah.
We don't see your screen.
Sorry. There you go.
Thank you.
So this would be a circle with a half, one-half square mile area, any, any projects that would happen within that. And not specifically this area. It could be, you know, another half-square-mile area in the facility. But it would allow the city to review and regulate projects that would go beyond a certain scope. So the larger projects in the, in the refinery. And that isn't to say that a, that a project that wouldn't necessarily need a transmission facility permit, wouldn't be expected to meet the requirements of the ordinance. It just means they wouldn't have to go through the public hearing process and receive, and receive a permit for that. If we were talking about one-half square mile area, if it was a square measured equally on all sides, that would, that would look like this roughly. Obviously, it could be shifted around depending, or even rotated to help fit into that. But really, I just wanted to provide a little context on what that actually means. Based on the conversation that staff had with the, with the Flint Hills Resources, it seems like most of their concerns would be met by this update and would alleviate some of the, the onerous or maybe unreasonable public hearing process requirements for a, for a pipeline in the refinery. So just again, here was what a half-mile square, one-half square mile circle, and then one-half square mile square would look like. So I can take any questions. As with any text amendment that isn't really tied to a, tied to a application, if the Planning Commission feels like changes need to be made, this certainly can be brought back at the next meeting. Otherwise, staff is recommending the text amendment as it is shown in the staff report, which would update the definition, removing the, the language that says with regards to transmission facilities, the power lines, or what currently says natural gas transmission pipelines in excess of 200 pounds per square inch, and replace that portion with pipelines not required for the local distribution network serving homes and businesses. That would get rid of that language that specifies natural gas. And then the second component would be adding language to the threshold, which currently is, is pipelines that are less than or equal to one-fourth mile in length are exempt from a transmission facility permit, or in the case of transmission facilities located entirely within a single processing facility, located entirely within a one-half square mile area measured equally on all sides.
Thank you, Anthony. So can you put your, I don't care if it's a circle or the square back up, but one of the two of them, I have a couple of questions just to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, one moment.
Yeah. So if they were doing, if they were doing pipeline work, as long as all of the work was within this circle.
Yep.
They wouldn't need a permit.
Right. So say they were connect, you know, doing this line. Well, there's a kind of a lot of ways that they route around. Can you see my cursor where it's moving?
Yep.
So, so it would allow them to, to do their work within there and not have to go through the public hearing process. Now, if it was something that was up here and maybe going way to the far southern edge of the facility, that would, that would trigger it because it would leave that one-half square mile area. And I do want to note too, I, staff did include the language that it would be a one-half square mile area measured equally on all sides, because I think if you really think about it, you could get creative with what the area would actually, could actually be if it was just, you know, essentially very mandered around to, to make a area that just covers everything.
Right, right. So they could, in essence, like that circle could move around. So that circle could move to the, or maybe the square is more appropriate, could move to that far edge of their property, allowing 52 there or something like that. And as long as it's within their property, they wouldn't need it. So they could go all the way to the edge of 52.
Mm-hmm.
And stay there.
And, and the, and the amendment reads entirely within a single processing facility.
Okay.
It would have to stay in the refinery.
And not, not some of the other land that they use. They would have to stay in, in this, the core land, not all the other land that they've bought up. That would have helped.
Right, right. So that's kind of part of the reason, the language regarding, because we discussed if it's owned by the, if it's owned by another property owner or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, just really kind of keeping it into what, you know, what they're really are doing, those kinds of things. Because if it's, if it's something that's going out into land even that they own, that's kind of a significant project still.
Right. And they wouldn't have to come to the city at all with it. So it's not that they just wouldn't need the public hearing. The city would have no, they don't have to notify the city of the, the work they're doing or anything. Is that correct?
Which is the case for a lot of their stuff that's considered equipment, to be honest, because there isn't a building permit required. We do get to see a lot of their other projects that, that have a structural building component. But this would, would kind of keep a lot of the, the piping in there and allow it to fall under the equipment umbrella.
Can you, if I could, can you describe sort of the, the difference then for, at the public hearing portion, but in terms of what the city engineers would be reviewing or not be reviewing for?
So, so the, yeah. So the things that do come to us are grading permits, if they're doing earthwork that's beyond a certain threshold. If it's a building, structures, temporary structures, like their blast tents and things like that would still be coming to us. Those are the sorts of things that we'd be seeing.
No, I mean, in terms of a pipeline, let's say it's a pipeline that they're doing today before this amendment. What would be changing in terms of what review for that pipeline?
Well, I think that, I think they maybe have been doing work under the assumption that they weren't part of the definition of a transmission facility. So we may be seeing more things that are larger in scope than what would just fit within a half-square-mile area. But, you know, Kim really is where the conversation started with this. And unfortunately, she's not here, but I would, I would think that they maybe have been doing some in, equipment installations for pipes that, that in the same way that they would do their other equipment out there, like a conveyor belt or something like that.
All right. So is it true to say that, that, that today, they do probably a lot of projects that don't even meet the quarter-mile factor, that, that don't get reviewed by the city? So it's really just a matter of difference, scope of what their size and scope of the projects?
Yeah, I would say that's fair.
Is there concerns or thoughts on, are there other companies, businesses that this would apply to in Rosemont? Or should we be concerned about future pipeline, or future companies that, that this could apply for and concerns in that regard?
Well, one of, one of the things that the city council and, and staff have been, philosophy is that we have enough industrial businesses in Rosemont, so I don't see us getting a lot more new ones. And the ones that we do have outside of here aren't generally ones that have a lot of pipeline or liquids that they're moving. You know, CF has a little bit, but a lot of what Mosaic purchased from CF is, is that fertilizer solids and things like that. So they're not really pipes. So it is pretty limited really to Flint Hills. They do have their ammonium thioculfate, the ATS terminal on the other side of 52. If there were any pipelines that would go between the refinery and that, there's a lot more regulation because it would be crossing the freeway. So that would require a permit in and of itself. So to answer your question, no, I don't think there's a lot of concern or anticipation that this is something that is an expanding use in Rosemont.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
A question.
Yes.
What's to, what's to prevent them from doing serial projects? So something that would stay within that area and then just, you know, this is a separate project and have it adjoining at a later date so that it can evade this requirement?
And kind of like link them and chain them along. Well, I guess there's nothing really currently that would prevent any, anything from, from doing that really. You know, if there's a, a pipeline that's less than a quarter mile anywhere, and then a future they extend it. And, you know, I don't, I don't think there's anything stopping them. And there's nothing that would make it easier than it already is. Do you feel like there should be some language related to that? Gets pretty technical. So.
I don't know. I, I don't really know. It's just, it makes me wonder because it just seems like particularly for a facility like this, it's hard to know what's, what's a project and, you know, what's included in a project and what's a separate project. And, yeah, and I see the problem that you're talking about in the other situation too. And I don't know, maybe haven't run into it before, and maybe that isn't, isn't an issue. But I wonder that we might foresee.
Yeah, I think if we're, if we're looking at a project, you know, we're only looking at it based on what they're doing at any given time. And I, yeah, I don't think there's a really good answer to that.
Okay. I just raised that as a question that maybe you want to think about because it seems to me that, you know, a lot of projects like this could be done in phases.
Mm-hmm.
That extends to other facilities as well, I guess.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? I mean, thinking back, thinking on Commissioner Vanderwill's question, it, you know, I don't see that the, that it really calls out like a single project. So if they were going to, if they were going to do improvements or, or change anything or create pipeline, if it, you know, it, I guess it doesn't really call out like within a single project that these apply. So, you know, if they decided to, to do some work up at the top part of that property and then at the lower part of that property, when does that box get, get drawn and what, what falls within and outside of it? If they do one in November and one in March, are they separate? You know, because it doesn't really, I'm not really seeing language that says a separate project.
When I do think that they, they have a lot of projects that are like that, you know, even just looking at the, looking at the layout of the site, that there's a lot of interconnections that occur. I, I think it's mostly what we would want to be able to ensure is those larger, those larger projects that do traverse quite a bit of distance in one go. You know, if they just were connecting, even if they were just connecting each tank to one another, I think that would add quite a bit of distance. But is it, is it just, I don't know. I, I don't know how we would really necessarily regulate it.
I, I guess my question is whether it makes sense to add some sort of time component for contiguous projects.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense.
You know, if, if you're doing contiguous projects within the space of two years or something like that, then the two will be added together. I don't, that's maybe something to talk to your city attorney about, but it just seems to me like a pretty easy way to evade getting a permit. Now, you know, maybe that's never been a problem and that won't be a problem in the future. I don't know how practical that is, but it might be something that you want to talk about, maybe putting into a definition or something.
Sure. Yeah, I think the definition section would be a great way to offer that clarity.
Yeah, Madam Chair, for the planning question, just if I could jump in quickly, I, I don't know that we are going to see a lot of that. Typically, there's a reason why they're doing these projects and it's connecting, you know, something to another something where they need to transmit. So usually, it's not in their interest to phase those projects or do it in a way to try to avoid regulations. I mean, avoiding the regulations are going to cost them a lot more time and money than, than just coming in and getting a, a permit through the public hearing process. You know, having said that, I think, I think it's fine just to add something. And they're stating that, you know, for projects that are contiguous, the city can require a permit if they exceed the permit amount or permit limitations. So I think that would be one reasonable way to handle that.
My, my guess is they do a lot of projects that are under quarter-mile all the time for piping, right? High level of frequency that we don't see because they don't meet the current standards, right? So I guess I'd be more concerned if they get a project that extended outside of their, their, their boundary line there. So now they, they do, they, they pump jet fuel up to Minneapolis-St. Paul Airport, for example. So in a case like that, any, any work that goes up, out beyond that border would be required, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And if it's outside of the facility, it would just be the quarter-mile distance versus a, versus a area.
So with this. So with this, Pam has given some, some feedback on a definition. Do we feel we want to see this come back again for discussion? Or do we want to, do we want to make a motion and include that staff incorporates definitions of a project and contiguous projects in the definition section? Any preferences?
Well, I'll speak up. I, I, I feel like I don't understand this problem well enough, right? So it could be a fact that Flint Hills does eight-mile projects all the time that, that don't get permitting, right? So they've got some kind of quality standards that they've got to be following. We're talking about projects that go beyond that in a quarter, that are quarter-mile. So then in current state, we're doing a permitting process through the city. So they clearly have standards in place for the shorter pipelines. For those that are longer, what is it that the city is adding? What value are we adding in reviewing that? I mean, what, have we found anything? Are we doing additional inspections? Those are the kind of questions I ask, and I don't feel like I know enough to really make a decision on this one. On the surface, it sounds to me like it's pretty easy amendment to make because, again, they're probably doing shorter projects all the time that we're not reviewing, right?
Yeah, I, I believe that's the case. I think it was, it's more really to offer some clarity and to allow us to be a little bit more to eliminate their argument that, well, we don't carry natural gas, so why, we don't fall under that. We don't need a transmission facility. But on the same point, changing the definition will allow us to regulate that. But if we're changing the definition, then we're making it, we're increasing the burden and maybe opening them up to requiring a transmission facility permit that they had themselves thought that they didn't need. And, and they didn't by definition if it wasn't containing natural gas. So it's kind of a, a trade-off of allowing us a little bit more opportunity to regulate pipelines while not in the course of, of increasing that regulation, becoming onerous or overly burdensome on them for doing things that they've been doing a million, you know, over and over already.
I think in, in response to your question, Melissa, I think I would be comfortable with recommending it because I don't really know to an extent my concern is really something that is something that we would see in reality, you know, it's, it's more of kind of a hypothetical legal concern than it is practical concern. So I'd be comfortable with recommending it with the recommendation also that some consideration be given to that as to whether that is a realistic concern and that that be dealt with prior to taking it to the city council.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, Commissioner Vanderwell, I'll let you make the motion then. And I would, I, I do agree with you. I think it's more of a hypothetical concern, but I think also when we're looking at these things, they are text amendments that are being made to the ordinances. And while we apply it right now to Flint Hills in this current day and age and everything, it doesn't mean five, 10, 15 years down the road of what might apply. So I do think your hypothetical concern is still, is still something to be mindful of. So with that, do you want to make our motion?
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with you. And I think also that it might already apply to some of the more, the projects that are more linear pipelines. But yeah, I'll make the motion. So motion to recommend the city council adopt an amendment to sections 11-2-15 and 11-1-4 of the zoning ordinance related to the essential services and transmission facilities.
Okay. It's been moved. Was that Commissioner Freeman that seconded it? I missed it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded along with the comments that were made in regards to the definitions that Commissioner Vanderwell stated prior to the motion. Stacy, will you take role?
Um, Kenninger.
I.
Vanderwill.
I.
Freeman.
Hi.
Marlo.
Hi.
Rivera.
Hi.
Schmuzik.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Motion passes. That concludes this item and the public hearing section this evening. This item will move forward to the city council meeting. Tentatively, this item is scheduled to move forward to the city council meeting on August 18th, 2020. With that, our next planning commission meeting is August 25th. Kyle and Anthony, can you just confirm that? We won't have a second Tuesday? Okay. So the next planning commission meeting is August 25th, 2020. Currently slated to be in council chambers, but again, please watch communications from city staff, watch the city website. Anyone watching the meeting or attending should watch the city website for updates on that meeting. Is there any other? There's no old business, any new business or any discussion items? Seeing none, I will adjourn our planning commission meeting for Tuesday, July 28th. Meeting adjourned.